That's where I was at. Are we on? We're on?
Yep.
Let's go ahead. Going to call the meeting to order if everybody's staying for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. We have Supervisor Geppert, Supervisor Banks, and then myself Supervisor Tinkell online. I believe Flavia is coming in from about 4,000 miles away.
She is online. She is having... She cannot hear us. We can hear her, but she currently can't hear us. I'm working with her.
Would you make the motion?
In extenuating circumstances.
Exceptional circumstances.
Exception.
Immensely exceptional. I'll second that motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Because I can't say anything to Flavia because she can't hear it. Okay. Approval of the final agenda. The only thing that I know that we have right now is item 8A. That was erroneously put in. It was already done, so that will not be on the approval of the minutes. They've already been approved. Motion? Yes.
She's... I was going to ask her. She'll need a Face Timer.
Lost my contact. Approval of the final agenda. Anybody have any other additions or corrections?
Nope.
Motion to approve?
Prove 8A, 8B, and C.
Do I have a second? Thank you.
Skip the couple. Approval of the final agenda.
Final... What did I say?
Although we did that.
No. That's what you're doing.
That's what I'm doing.
I was down to approval of minutes.
Approval of final agenda. We have a motion. We have a second.
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close? None? Thank you.
Right by public comment. Sorry.
Yeah, you guys skipped everything.
He was trying to move out really, really quick. Public comment. Do we have anybody turning anything in?
I have two. First one is Joe Schofield. Just a non-agenda item.
I believe it's a non-agenda item. Yeah, I was a recipient, as were, I guess, most Pelican Preserve residents, of an email from our Board of... Community Association Board. And I'm not sure if all of you folks have seen it, but there's a lot of comments in there concerning what is being done, what you're responsible for, and what they're doing. And they list in their first... One of their first items that all the different activities that the CDD owns. And then they state that the responsibility to oversee these is on CDD... oversee the CD assets is KW's responsibility. They don't handle all of your responsibilities. They handle some of them, but they infer that they're doing everything. And I just want to... My question to you folks is, have you seen this, and do you agree with what's written, and what would be your reply through the comments that they've written?
I haven't seen it. I haven't seen it. Who authored it?
The Pelican Preserve Community Association. And I will go through a few of these items here.
Do we have a communication issue over there?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, the issue is more of the...
What's your position on these?
The issue is more of the subject matter than the communication, from Joe's perspective.
I think it's community both, Bob.
Okay. But go ahead with your presentation.
It says PPCA is doing everything they can to protect the community's best interests. I would tend to say that they never even came to any CDD meetings or PPAC meetings until about two years ago. And they certainly weren't protecting interest. PPAC has been doing that very well for years and years. And the other group has been hardly ever active unless they were asking for something. But they have always been accommodated. But they certainly aren't protecting our community as they imply. Who other than PPCA advocates for the community with the GS-CCDD? Well, they do list PPAC. They list the individuals on your group. But my comment is PPAC is always advocated for the community. When did PPCA even start to have a representation coming to these meetings to represent themselves? And you guys all know, that was just recently. They talk about the $93,000 that has been paid to them for the expenses to manage the O&M agreement. But a couple of years ago, a lot of that was taken away from them. A lot of the responsibilities. And the board or the CDD has now been paying the bills. Why have we still been paying them $93,000 when the services were cut? And my question is, what did they do with the money that they didn't have to pay for the services that they're no longer fulfilling? And I imagine they're asking for $60,000 next year. What happened to the $30,000 this past year? Where is it? Did they give it back to you? Did they spend it somewhere else? I think the CDD has a responsibility to start looking at what they're doing a lot closer than ever has been done. And I think the CDD has been at fault for not checking on these financial matters. What's the status of the 2024 CDD budget? The CDD will act upon a proposed budget approved by Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee for this coming fiscal year. A defined set of services include gatehouse are included, along with a reduced fee of $60,000 which you'll be paying them. The budget also includes funds for a full-time maintenance person, Pelican Preserve to care for the CDD assets. The person will be employed by you folks and paid by our taxes. Next item is the CDD's planning to reduce or eliminate services. Are they? Have you ever said you're going to reduce services and keep the money? That's what's implied. Yes, the GS-CCDD has said they do not want to continue staffing the gatehouse or roving patrols in Pelican Preserve as they do not benefit this GS-CCDD. If they do that and PPCA is forced to pay for these services, it will result in a sizable budget increase for PPCA. Well, that would be expected.
Can you wrap it up?
Well, I'd like to... There's a bunch of things here.
Well, I think the big thing is, is that we totally have relied on, as long as I can remember, on the relationship we've had with PPAC as far as communications with us as what they want here. And we've pretty much accommodated that. I don't even recall ever hearing that other name as long as I've been here.
What thing? PPCA?
No, the other one. The Community Action.
Well, the Community Association is PPCA.
Pelican Preserve.
No, the one that he's talking about.
PPAC.
Okay. We have dealt with that same group all of this time. That's been our communication.
Let me help you in answering this in a very brief way because it's not only agenda today. But the board is aware of the activities of where the communication... I mean, where the Community Association is going. And to that end, and specifically the O&M agreement, there is a separate group of people that are negotiating that mutually and cooperatively and cooperatively. And that consists of Laura Chelsea, John Grega, Fay, and Nancy. And they have not finished their, you know, final position, negotiation, whatever. But we'll be ready in September to discuss that. And some of the issues that brought up in there are legitimately for discussion because it is a fact that the staff has made a recommendation, thrown out that maybe we would curtail some services. The board has not adjudicated on that. We have not had that discussion yet. We're going to have it next month. So I think these things will play out to everyone's satisfaction. I saw the letter.
I question that.
You know, it could have been worded a little differently, but anybody could do that.
Well, first of all, you have a cooperative meeting going, but this email went out without anybody else seeing it but the board.
Joe, that's not...
I don't want to argue with you. I want to make my statement sit down.
That's not true. I just want to tell you that.
Well, that's what I was told. It was not sent to anybody else for their review or approval. And I take that at face value, what I was told. I think that was not in good conscience if you're having cooperative, good meetings to send something out like you did. Or not you, but they did. It doesn't have all the real facts in it. It's very slanted. I call it a sales piece or propaganda, quite frankly.
Mr. Chair, with all due respect, Joe, would public comments not for debate back and forth?
Okay. I would like to see... I would like to recommend to the CDD that you look at this and have a rebuttal and request that the Pelican Preserve Community Association publish your rebuttal in their contact list. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. So late this afternoon, I did send the board the... the PPAC and this Board of Supervisors the letter that did go out to the Community Association. I received a copy of it myself. So it's in your inboxes. I had sent it just moments before coming over here. So you'll have the opportunity to read it before the next meeting.
I have one more. I don't know. Joe, do you want to do yours now, or do you want to wait for the public hearing later? Okay. Joe McCulca has one.
You're not staying till eight o'clock?
It's past his bedtime. Salaries of staff are still too high for Stony Brook.
Going out to dinner, and it is past their bedtime.
No dedication, Joe. No dedication.
Okay. I'm going to keep it brief. I know it's hard to believe. My question here is that I do not understand and... I'm sorry. I apologize. You're absolutely right. Joe McCulca, I'm president of the Stony Brook HOA Master Association, and we have reviewed the budget that was put out. I have it printed in front of me. And I still do not understand how we are being asked to pay 5% of two employees, a public works director, and a public works... oh, facilities supervisor, that that salary isn't completely paid, or we are not paying our share of the salary for those individuals with the per-door fees that we are paying directly into the 001 fund, like most other communities here. Why are we being charged for them? And what do they do that would be related to the Stony Brook 004 account? I'm done.
That's the question. Staff, with that 5%, what's the basis of that?
Any projects that exceed the $5,000 O&M agreement has to come to the district for staff to oversee and handle.
5% salary? They spend that many hours a week on projects to come before them? And how many have recently come before them?
There is an asphalt pavement restoration project that I believe the HOA started.
Which has been around for months. That's correct.
And that is one project that we're going to be overseeing here in the next couple of months.
Anything that has to do with the facilities that we own...
No, this is directly for their roads.
That's what I meant. But I mean, anything that's ours, which is... that's ours, inside your deal, somebody has got to oversee it. I just assumed that that percentage was based upon some historical number that we've had for the years.
As a board member and president, I've never met these two individuals. How many times have they been in our community? And they're going to oversee what? The things that we oversee?
Well, I'm assuming that bidding, documentation, specification, preparation, any of that stuff.
There was an individual contracts person, Randy, who has been a little bit involved. But really, that's about it. I'm telling you.
For the whole year.
This is not right. It really is not right. We paid these people already on the 001.
Well, I thought... I thought, maybe erroneously, I thought we had an agreement with Pelican or with Stony Brook. Last week, we made four or five changes.
Reductions.
Yeah.
And I thought we were done.
I was under the impression... I was not here at the last meeting, or I got here a little bit late. But I was not under the impression that we were paying for people out of... geez, public works. It makes no sense to me. Not by definition, what I understand, public works.
All of the stuff that we have in your deal falls under public works.
Not really. No, public works. You're going to... Let's say the things have to do with sewer and piping in the road.
That's totally... Anything that's with sewer or utilities, that falls under our enterprise. So that wouldn't be eligible.
Well, I think it'd be nice for the guys to go in and introduce themselves, okay? And boy, that was a lot more than three minutes of the person before me. Thank you.
Anybody else? Did Flavia try to chime in?
She's good. She can hear us now, so...
And speak.
We could hear her before, but she can hear us now. I don't have any more public comments for this meeting. I do have a couple. One I need to read in, and two people that have requested to speak at the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. So we're done? That's it?
Yep.
Okay. Local achievements and recognitions. Do we have any?
Yeah. We just... We've received a couple compliments to our utility staff for services that they assisted with or responded pretty quickly. I know Mary, it was like 4:30 on a Friday. Gentleman didn't have water to his home. We got the call in, I think at like 4:20. We got over there and got him going. Human error on that side, on their side. But then Isaac and I think Andrew was the other compliment that we received. So just want to recognize their efforts and contribution.
Great. Great, great. Yeah, they're out running around all the time chasing fires around on the utilities. Advisory Committee items and reports. Do we have anything?
We don't. I don't have any.
Moving on. Approval of minutes. We got 2B, the July 20th Board of Supervisor Meeting Minutes, including the affidavit from the public hearing for the water rate increase, and the August 3rd Board of Supervisor Meeting Minutes. Anybody have any additions, corrections, modifications to those?
I had nothing. And I'm going to motion to approve items A, 8, B, and C.
8B and C. You have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on. Consent agenda items. We have A through G. Anybody want to pull anything?
No.
No. Motion to approve consent agenda items A through G.
A through G.
Two second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 District Engineer.
Steven?
Steven, you on?
He's here. He might be in the restroom.
He's in the building.
He probably couldn't believe that we went through nine items that fast. You didn't know we were going to go through nine items that quick, did you?
That was really quick. I thought we were just on public comment.
Go ahead, Steve.
Good afternoon. Steven Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. Before you, I have our task authorization update. We'll go through the projects. First up is irrigation meter replacement. That's been completed, and we're working on record drawings, or they should have been wrapped up. Irrigation pump station generator. We've provided all our comments on shop drawings. We're still waiting for the resubmit on the generator, which is the long lead item. So hopefully they'll get that done shortly. And once that's approved, we'll just be in a holding pattern because that's a 72-plus week lead time right now. Irrigation enforcement improvements. Tomorrow Fred is going to have a meeting with staff to go over the 90% plans. Flowway weir adjustments. We did a final walkthrough punch list evaluation last week. Provided the punch list to the contractor, and they notified us today that they completed those items. They were sod, sod items. So they had to go and re-sod a couple of areas on weirs 2 and 3. So we're going to verify that tomorrow and get that project wrapped up. Griffin utility relocation. The project's just moving along.
Well, one comment on the flowway weir. Once the contractor's responsibilities are finished, and I know we're very close to that.
Yes.
There will be a second review between the Pelican Preserve residents and district staff. We may make some accommodations for some florals and things to hide some of the stuff that's in process. Shouldn't be significant money, and it will be handled by existing funds within Pelican.
Okay.
But if anybody's listening and wants to know about that, yeah, the construction part's done, pretty much done.
Okay.
But the resident punch list is not totally finished.
And there's a warranty period that the contractor has to hold for all the items that he put in. So keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Yes. Lower Hawthorne well. Here, it says we're anticipated to rebid in the fall. That's changed since this was published. Randy's working on the advertisement in ITB right now. So this is going to get rebid in September is the plan right now. Air Raider FPL assistance. We delivered figures to staff on Monday so they can carry that project forward. Phase 2, your 2 Lake Bank restoration. We're waiting for them to restart the work after the rainy season, which hasn't been much of a rainy season as of yet, but I'm sure it's about to kick off. So we're planning to have a pre-con, kind of warm-up in October, November timeframe to reevaluate the remaining lakes. Gateways Utility Storage Building. Chelsea reached out to the lead permit reviewer today from Lee County Utility... not Lee County Utilities, Lee County. And she responded back and said that we should expect a permit tomorrow.
Jeez.
The Gateway Admin Building. We are revising some of the architectural and structural plans to accommodate the request by Lee County for... to meet the commercial standards. So we're working on that right now.
I thought we were trying to avoid that.
We did.
We did try to, yeah.
Many times.
So we tried, but failed.
Yeah.
Yeah. In our opinion, it's above and beyond, but we don't have the final say.
It falls within the PUD because institutional only accounts for churches. It doesn't account for governmental entities, unlike other municipalities I've worked for. So we do have to meet those commercial design standards. And we're applying for any deviations that we can to not be so costly of a change order.
Is there a financial ramification of this?
Yes, there will be.
I mean, is minimal or...
Significant or...
Significant.
I haven't had that conversation with Tetra Tech yet.
I know. We're trying to keep it as minimal as possible.
What's one of the examples of things?
I mean, we had awnings. Like, that was one of the items. That's a minor aesthetic. Like, that's a low...
Awnings?
Pavers is another one. We have to have a certain percentage of pavers.
Articulation?
Yeah.
You can't have a flat purpose.
Peak slopes.
Yeah, peak slope.
Oh, that sounds expensive.
That doesn't sound good. Okay. The argument for that is to avoid the big box look.
So that...
That they approve all the time and put on every street intersection?
Yeah.
FYI, 25 Lake Bank. We're waiting for SRF to approve the design portion of that. Once we have confirmation of that, we'll prepare a task authorization to bring forward to the board's approval. Our hydraulic model, we finalized the report, delivered that to staff. We received plans from FGUA for their proposed interconnect, which we are reviewing currently. Pelican Pond Bank Inspection. We're going to wrap that report up next week and deliver to staff for their review before it goes out to everyone. Public Works Maintenance Building, project is relatively new. We're still in the preliminary phases of that project. Development Updates. Arborwood Phase 3, we're still working on punch list items with Lennar. Daniels Parkway Apartments. They were here at the previous meeting to discuss their options for irrigation. We're waiting to hear back from them on what their proposed path is. Santa Luz. We've been going back and forth with the contractors, trying to get their punch list items wrapped up. We've gotten some communication back from Lennar, so that seems to be a little bit of progress, but they haven't addressed all of our concerns yet. Centosa Apartments, the Alta Rezone. We had a internal meeting yesterday to go over staff comments. We plan on publishing our review letter next week as well. FP Restoration, that's just an upcoming project. They haven't submitted their permit yet, but that's going to be a new building over by the Girl Scout, the old Girl Scout building. Prado Bill... Bob, we have this on here. We haven't heard anything from Lennar on that, but...
I heard that's on hold. That's the last I heard because of money, financing.
DFP?
Wait, you said Prado. I'm sorry. I'm talking about the one down here by the bank. Questions for Steve?
I do have one.
Steve? Hey, Flavia.
Hey. Regarding the irrigation and the force main, that includes Griffin, right?
No. That is just the redundant main going down the FPL easement from here at the wastewater treatment plant to essentially North Haven.
Ballpark.
Ballpark, yeah.
Yeah. Hidden Links, North Haven.
Hidden Links, North Haven, yes.
North End of Hidden Links.
North Haven doesn't exist yet.
To provide for a redundancy of the irrigation enforcement system, not actual irrigation heads.
Okay. Got it.
Steve, Santa Luz, as I understand it, Lennar asked for a meeting. They want to have a meeting.
I wasn't aware of that.
They did. We provided some dates and times and have not heard back. We told them that Steven is... It was either needed to be tomorrow. Steven's out next week on vacation, or it had to be when he got back. We provided some dates and times and haven't heard anything back since.
Okay. I've been talking with Austin over there, who's the guy that actually does it. He said he was working on the list.
Okay.
But I didn't get a feeling that he had the whole list.
Okay.
He had bits and pieces. One of the issues that he came up with, and it is a significant issue for us, apparently they put in... Did they use our meter boxes for the water potable lines to the buildings?
I'm not aware.
Something was on the punch list that they had to change. I don't know exactly all the details, but it necessitated changing the box. And now the box is sticking up instead of flush with the ground, setting up about four to six inches above the ground.
So they need to adjust the grade on those, yeah.
I don't know how else to... It's going to look... You know, it's going to come over here and we could do like that to get up to it. What is it that they did? Did they omit something?
I don't... I'm not familiar with that portion of it, so that's out of my reals right now.
I just... I'm worried from on the HOA side because they're getting ready to do turnover.
Right.
I want to make sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed to where that HOA don't get stuck.
Right.
With any punch list items that they walk on. Just make sure that we have that taken care. Then the other issue is last week, he may not even know about it. Last week, we got a blast email that the irrigation system was shut down or going to be shut down. What was that associated with?
The... I believe there was a... That was when the county, the contractor out here hit. Bill, last week, that was hit with the roundabout. Was that where they hit the ARV and they had to do the repairs? We had to shut the system down? Or was that with the other issue with the sleeve or the...
That was a different... The ARV issue. Last week, one of the new conduits cracked.
The pipe, yeah, and they had to do an emergency...
At the roundabout?
Yes.
It cracked horizontally along the length of conduit. And it probably happened when they were making the connection and they hooked a chain to it, you know, or tried to pull it in.
I had people asking about that.
Bill was just telling me about the meter boxes out in Santa Luz.
Yeah.
When they were installing them, they didn't have the materials they needed, so they used a placeholder. And then when they actually got the correct materials in, they installed them in their different size. So that was the mix-up.
They're just going to have to figure out how to do it.
Yeah, then this is on the...
Lower the...
Because it's... It couldn't be in a worse place to have it happen.
Yeah, they're either going to have to slow everything with elevation, or they're going to have to dig down and lower all the conduits.
Move... Well, they got to go back, I would think, to be able to do it. They're going to put fittings in there.
Yeah.
And they don't have a lot of room to do.
There's not much room to do that. Okay. Okay. I just wanted to hear because I know I'll hear back. The CDD did this, the CDD did that. So it was their problem for the construction.
We've got eyes on them.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Steve? Thanks, Steve.
Chelsea, need me to stick around or?
I can. We're good.
Okay. Great. You all have a great afternoon.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Men's Strady of Agenda Items.
Nothing.
None?
No.
None whatsoever? Good plan. What are we going to do here? District Manager Monthly Reports.
Yep. So first, we have administration, and I'll turn it over to Laura.
Just one thing. We've been busy getting things together. I'm still working a little bit to tie up the final numbers for the hurricane. We should be getting the check shortly. Apparently, they mailed it to us, and it got returned, even though the address was right. So they're going to send it overnight to make sure we get it. I did want to point out in part of the administrative report that we did send the Stony Brook FAQs to their HOA board to distribute. We don't have any way to know if it actually was distributed, but it was also added to our website. That was something that was requested to get done.
So the question, I know there's been many discussions over the last couple of months as we were trying to work through some of these issues with Stony Brook. Is did the board want us to direct mail that FAQ? It'll need to be updated because of some of the actions that you took at the last meeting and the ratification today of the landscape stuff. But did you want us to direct mail the FAQ to the Stony Brook residents?
Okay. Thoughts?
Come, can you?
Can you come up to the microphone?
Kate, can you do this, happy medium? Let us know what the issues are that you don't have.
I think we've already done this. Is this the same FAQs we've been going back and forth on?
Let me say this, that Margaret did go through them and reply, and some of her suggestions were ignored. There are some things that are just not correct. Both the questions that are really good questions, and some of the answers are not correct. So we didn't think that was a good thing to do at that point in time. It was just going to confuse people rather than answer questions.
Is a letter going out on your behalf to the people?
We have a board meeting on Monday, and part of it after the manager's... We have a board meeting on Monday and part of it after the, uh, manager's report. I will do an update on agreements and changes that have occurred between us and, uh, Gateway. And it concerns road turnover, it concerns property turnover, and also a reduction in some of the costs that we appreciate that were reduced in the budget and some of the reserve accounts. And we also did, as I had, I emailed everybody to state the other day that we have initiated a new reserve account for the roads, and that starts on September first. And we have also started to look into the, uh, tranking over the roads going forward. That seems to be the direction we are going in, so some of the questions there were also really kinda moot.
I, I don't remember if you were here at last meeting, but we had a brief discussion about the fact that, uh, this, this is going to be basically administered by you all. We're kind of out of it on the voting deal. But to me, as an outside observer, it, it's critical. If you gotta get eighty percent, you know, it's not like getting sixty-six and two thirty.
No, no, and not only that, Ed, you may not be aware of, they actually require each and every signature being on a separate page and be notarized. And we're talking.
But it's husband and wife or whoever's on the, the leaf of record.
But there is no time limit on how much time we have to get this. That was my concern. Once we start it, we're not, the clock isn't ticking. And, uh, so we have time to do it, but, and we're looking at whatever options we do have and how to do this. But I will say this, uh, we do have the issue of control of the gatehouse. That's a lever for us, so to speak, if you know what I mean. And, uh.
Is there a possibility?
Yes.
That the district staff's questions and the, uh, Stony Brook's committee, whoever that is, can consents on one letter?
Ed, I mean, Bob.
Yeah.
I don't know, I, I just wanna say, I don't know if Joe is aware, but I just pulled up the communication. Uh, once we did the final draft staff, I met with Margaret, and I actually have her handwritten notes on the frequently asked question. And there's nothing in there that she did not agree to. There's not, nothing that is it untruth or not quite. There were some, uh, suggestions regarding just a word here and there. And there was a one unknown item that she asked for further review, and we did follow up with it. So I'm more than happy to forward this back to Chelsea. She came forward it to the board. But there was absolutely a consensus between Margaret and myself. I mean, I have, I have the document on her in writing, so if, unless there's something else new that came after that. But she was on board with the communication. What I don't understand is the back and forth, because when I was at that meeting, it was made very clear by Joe and the entire board that the communication was going to be mailed out for transparency reasons, and now we're back paddling. So I am definitely online with upgrading the document with the correct information, but sending it out to the residents. Our job is to make sure that this is clear and concise and, and we are, give as much as information as we can. So I would disagree with Joe's, because I, I did before his speak, looked at the, at the communication from Margaret, and there's nothing there that was crossed out.
All I can say, if, Flavia, if you'd like, uh, we can sit down together and go over the questions, and maybe I.
Again, I mean, I'll be honest, we, we're, we're going on month four from that time that I went to the meeting. And, and on the email from Margaret, we did ask, and I remember Chelsea was copy on it, she said she met with you. She met with Gary, and then the others did not have any feedback. So she was the voice of the board. So, I mean, I just take it in consideration with everybody's time that, you know, we took it face value. I met her, you know, a few days after. I, I have all the information. We upgraded, we, we changed it, and, and then now we are again, which we don't agree. But that's not what was said at the meeting. That was not the information that was given a hard copy to me. Like, I literally, I still have the hard copy, which I'm pretty sure I provided to Chelsea as well.
So we need to take a step back at this solution, because evidently the way we've been addressing it is not proceeding us to finalization. How we would handle this in a normal environment is we would draft a document, would send it to the other party, the other party would redline, do their comments, and then and then we would kind of do a back and forth till we have, till we have a resolution. I think our staff sitting down with a few members of Stony Brook trying to hash this out, I think there, there might be some issues in, the Stony Brook parties coming to terms, or maybe who's in the room, who's not in the room, whatever. I, I don't know, I'm speculating. But I think what we need to, to do is draft the document, which is, which we've already done, hand it back to Stony Brook. Stony Brook as a collective unit needs to capture their feedback, and I understand if we position, um, something in the FAQ, and Stony Brook might wanna word it differently. I, I don't have any problem with that, uh, 'cause it's how the HOA would position the wording to their resident. We might word it a little differently. But we should be in a unified front on the FAQ in order for us to truly move forward. 'Cause I don't want us to draft a document, Stony Brook say they don't agree with it, they draft something different.
You're gonna get a no vote.
And then we come back, we may not have line of sight into what you're sending out, and then we're back to square ones. He said, he said, she, she said. So I'd like to avoid that.
The eighty percent vote is a challenge if everybody agrees.
It's unbelievable, and I will tell you, the document that I saw, that we're referring to, would have confused a lot of people.
And right, wrong, indifferent. Uh, my, my suggestion would be, we take, if, uh, Flavia, if you've worked with staff and we feel comfortable with what's in the FAQ, and what we feel is important from a, from a district's perspective, to convey to the residents. Then let's send that back to Stony Brook. Let you guys craft it. If you think something is factually incorrect, or if you wanna reword something, then you can send it back to us with your, with your comments. We can address it.
Flavia, would you consent to that?
I mean, to be honest, Doug, that's exactly what we did. Like, we met, Margaret and I met, we went over everything. I passed the information out to staff, 'cause I didn't touch the document. I said, he, and that's why I gave them the hard copy. I'm like, this is all that, you know, there are questions that, you know, one word was acceptance versus turnover. I mean, all minor stuff. Right? I gave, I gave that. Staff went, edited the document. It took a few weeks. Send it back to Margaret before it was sent, was posted on the website and said, here is the final after your comments. And, and then a few hours later, it was sent out to their entire board, because I don't think we heard from them, and then posted on the website. So exactly what you asked, it's exactly step by step what was done. I still.
There's a disconnect somewhere.
I totally agree that there's a disconnect somewhere.
Flavia, uh. President up here saying that he doesn't agree with the document.
Yeah, Margaret's, Margaret's at the podium. Uh, I think she wants to maybe air on the.
She's, yeah, Flavia and Margaret standing right next to me right now.
That's fine. And I just forwarded the document to Chelsea, so Chelsea came forward it to you all.
Let me just say this, in addition to what has been said, things have changed. We have taken some different positions. We've come to an understanding in some of the issues, and some of those questions have actually, uh, have been answered.
I totally agree, Joe. I totally agree with that. That's what I'm saying. Revised items that we changed, we definitely either take it out or clarify, 'cause now they're different. But when you made the statement that things are there are not true and we don't agree, is that is the position that I'm, I'm pushing back.
Well, I will say one thing. There was a comment in, as an answer to one of the questions there that was blatantly not true, and I didn't see the final document, so I don't know if it was removed. And it had to do, there was always funds before the OO four fund to handle the things in Stony Brook, and that was not true. The OO four was started specifically because there was nothing else, and that was to pay back the money that was lent, lent to Stony Brook during the crash. When we really needed to maintain the assets that Gateway owned. But that, that was just one point. That just was not true. And there's a couple of the lesser things that are grayer, but I'll turn it over to Margaret, because I gotta tell you, I was not party to the conversation that you're referring to. Okay?
All right.
And Margaret Feinberg. And Flavia, I do remember meeting with you. We did, I showed you the changes that we wanted. And when we got the final document, the, all those changes were not incorporated into that final document. And there wasn't going to be no more discussion. It was, here's the final version, and we're posting it on the website this afternoon. So there was no more, hey, well, why can't we still change this, or why can't we still change that? It was more of a, this is, this is it. We're not changing anything else, and it's going on the website. And not all of those changes were incorporated. In any email that I got, and I believe it was from Chelsea, it even stated that. We accepted some of your changes and we rejected other ones. So it was not a consensus.
Okay.
Then we know what we need to do. We need to go back and do it. But I'd say, this, this document, I don't think it should be whether or not, you know, whether we send it out or you send it out, it should be co-authored by both parties. And, and there should be no dissent. It doesn't matter if it comes from us or from you. It should be co-authored and approved on both sides without consent.
I agree, I agree. So, so then the, the deal is, is right now, if we, who's got this document? I've, I've never even seen it.
Steph, we haven't.
So is it in a position that we can send it out? Because it sounds like, if what Margaret is saying is correct, then there's going to be another rendition, comeback. It sounds like.
And let's treat it like a contract. Let's redline it. Let's track version control.
So here's my suggestion.
But I want, I want one voice of it coming back. I don't wanna say, we've approved it, then find out.
It should be Stony Brook's comments, not one individual.
It's everybody's, and everybody signs off on it, so that we don't have that misunderstanding going forward.
Here, here's my suggestion. And, and that stance was done through Margaret. She was the voice, and that's what Flavia met here at this table. So that, and, and because that issue came about last time, and that's why I believe they elected to have Margaret be the voice.
And again, I'm not concerned how we got here, to be quite honest. You know, let's, let's just move.
There, there, there will be a new rendition because of, again, the actions that were taken at the last meeting and then ratified today. So what we can do is we will send the word version to every member of the Stony Brook HOA. Ask for a designated representative. Please redline it, return it to the district by a time and date certain. A reasonable time and date certain, 'cause we have been, like Flavia said, working on this for four months. And then from that point, we can review the, the, the comments that were made. I can tell you that, I know history is one of the things that Joe always says about, um, what goes on. We weren't here. We have to read the minutes that the board has adopted and proved, and that's where the majority of these facts come from, is from the minutes. I can't, if, if the minutes are wrong, that's a whole different conversation. So that's the homework that staff has done. But we will send that out to them tomorrow, just like Doug suggested. Ask them to make redlines, return, return it to us, and then hopefully save us some stamps. And, uh, the HOA would be more than happy to email it to all of their members.
Well, I'm not, I'm not totally up to every one of the details that Joe mentioned, but I do know and read that is basically what happened back then. There was a original deal that it was on your nickel. You guys ran it. Somebody up there ran it. Then the, the problems occurred. Then the OO four came out. I, I do know that for a fact. Now, there might be some nuances in that, but that is the, the deal. That, to me, is historical. That can be corrected and make that right to where there's not an issue.
Come to the mic, come, come to the mic. And we wanna get it for the record.
Yes. Margaret Feinberg again. And just for clarification, when you said you were gonna send it out to all the members in Stony Brook, you meant the board members?
Yes, the board members.
We didn't.
If I had them, we wouldn't be here today, Margaret.
There are some people in the back that were questioning that, so I just wanted the clarification.
Okay, thank you.
All seven hundred and seventy-eight of you.
So I will send, I will send that out tomorrow. I will send it tomorrow.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that.
Sorry for that, uh, monthly report taking longer than expected.
Any other questions?
For Laura.
I don't have anything.
All right.
Did those, uh, at, I should say, did we get that application in on that, uh, those grants?
We're, it, it's the twenty-ninth. Tetra Tech is.
We'll say, that's getting close on timing.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, next we have the Public Works Department, and Andrew is here, if you have any questions for him.
Andrew, that's Joe McColl. Come back there.
They met, we met in person. Clarifying.
Just wanted to make sure everybody knew who everybody was.
Comment from earlier. They've met, they've met in person.
Okay, okay, dude.
Any, any comments or questions for the Public Works Department? All right.
Moving on.
Moving on. Uh, we've got the Utilities Department Monthly Report. Any questions for Bill, who I'm sure is running in here? Any questions?
Hey, what's the, uh, just remind me again, and I probably should know this. What's the timetable on the roundabout?
About a year. The utilities, the utility portion is wrapping up in a.
Should be wrapped up in three to four weeks.
Yeah. Now, I did, um, at the last board meeting, Doug, you asked about the, the big poster board. I did ask, uh, the county, and they said that they don't typically do those for DOT projects. They do them for, for PDNE, um, studies. So, but he was more than happy to suggest that if we wanted it, we could pay for it on our own dot.
And honestly, I, it's such a probably minimal expense. You're talking about maybe.
Your real problem is where you're gonna put it. That, that, that area down there, because of all the traffic variations, is, is, is a moving target.
Why don't you take a look and see if there's a good place to put front and, front and back?
Well, if the board wants us to, we can, we can get it done.
Let's just, why don't you get some estimates?
You're, you're talking about something that's advertised.
Just a big sign, you know. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, to get something printed up.
If you guys wanna, we'll, we'll try to keep.
Scope it out and come back and let us know if it, you know, if it makes sense.
Oh, well, you can make it happen. Just tell us if you guys want it to happen.
Well, let's know, let's get an estimate on how much, you know, come up with a concept, and then scope out the, uh.
If you can do it under five hundred, just do it. If it's more than that.
She's got, she's got a, a limitation deal as well above that.
Well, but I know, we've sent to the board.
But the, the, the big thing is, would've been nice to have done it a long time ago.
Yeah, I mean, but I, I don't think it's too late, 'cause it's not like, you know, it's only gonna be sent up there for a month or two.
Well, we'll, we'll see what kind of, um, renditions they have of the fountain, 'cause I think that's what you mentioned that.
That's what I'd want. I'd wanna rendition of the fountain.
Okay.
You know, not necessarily just a.
Like we talked about.
Not just, you know, a depiction of what a roundabout looks like, you know.
What, what can be done, or what is anybody doing? I am getting a massive amount of complaints about the traffic that in the morning between, uh, was described as six-thirty to seven-thirty. Uh, Gateway Boulevard is basically a parking lot. It's a disaster. Predominantly created by the schools. And the schools, are they doing something in the way of a lockup or a, a bar or a gate that they won't let people go in and queue on their property?
I, so I can, I can touch on that.
A padlock breaker will take care of that. That's ridiculous. They cannot queue or do something to queue out on our road. 'Cause we're, we're back to what I saw.
Not our road, it's county road.
County road, our road. We, we got money in that road. It's our road. The, but the issue is, is that they're starting to create and do exactly what they were doing before. Queuing up on the side. And, and it's, it appears to me to be that somebody on their side, school side, put down a gate.
They got a structure. They got a structure going on.
And they won't let you in, or they won't let the people in. That's, that's.
That's not a utility thing, but I'll take, I'll take that. I'll take that.
Where it does come into the utility is, is that if I'm a construction worker down there, I've got one eye on my ground, looking at what I'm looking at, and I got the other eye looking at this traffic, it's gonna kill me if I make the wrong step. It's dangerous down there. It's very dangerous.
Here's the thing, too, that I think we need to point out either to, to DOT or, you know, Lee County, um, law enforcement, is I don't think they were anticipating, or maybe they were, construction at the Charter School during the time they were mapping this out. So not only are they putting up, they just finished construction of that, their turf field, they're putting up bleachers and stuff, but they're also constructing. In addition, so I don't know if that.
So you think that might be.
I think that's impacting the through traffic in the, in the morning. I'm making an assumption, but I think that's one of the reasons.
So the Charter High School, and they hire the sheriff for the first two weeks of the start of the school to come out and help with enforcement and guiding. I, I can tell you that the Charter High School has, it seems like, has been a lot better than public high school, that at least that I've heard complaints and read. We did send a note to Lee County DOT. Um, as you guys can see, there's about thirty new signs on Griffin. Um, no parking signs. I did email DOT and asked, um, if they were gonna contact the sheriff. They had, we also contacted the sheriff. I think Flavia even reached out to the, the local, um, sheriff representative. The response I got back was, let's give it two weeks, and then DOT will be hounding the school district. And I, I said, I will be patient and wait the two weeks. Patience is a virtue, as my grandmother says.
So it is a, it is an understood problem.
Yes.
Okay.
But Ed, I just wanted to say that you are right. This, the, both schools install the gate, and they say it's for security reasons. They do not want people coming in and queuing in, in their parking lot for security reasons, because they only have two detail officers. So the gate is closed into, I believe it's fifteen minutes prior to letting the kids out. And then they can start queuing in, inside. So.
With their budget to add two more people to do se- security internally. That's all.
That's what I said.
Anything else for Mr. Shaw for utilities?
No, no.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else?
Yeah, turn it over. There's a couple more things. Your favorite.
Tony. District Attorney.
And I got this in on time this time, so.
We remembered.
I know.
Thank you.
Uh, the first one, needs the district. I reviewed, uh, some conveyance documents for some parcels in Pelican Reserve and elsewhere. Sent my comments to Charles Mann's office. There's some little nits on the owner's affidavit, and we need a title report on two of the tracks and something like under $5 in taxes need to be paid on one parcel. So, hopefully those will be taken up pretty soon and wrapped up. I have not heard back from Charles' office, but those are really easy fixes on that. On the, uh, with regards to, again, the Lee Health, I don't have any additional information on that. I've not been provided anything additional. The, uh, my memo was a draft form on the comments property, and that just parallels what we already have in place. It's like belts and suspenders for that. The cap improvement plan, we had a, uh, it's been completed, the foreign line lawsuit. We have the mediation set for September 6th. And as part of that, what I'd like to do is ask the board for a closed-door session on September 7th, the day after the mediation session, uh, to, that we desire advice concerning that litigation. And the meeting will be confined to settlement negotiations or strategy sessions related to litigation expenditures, so that in the event that there is something positive or development that comes out of that mediation that could be addressed that day or even continue to another date. Or if the mediation does not result in a tentative settlement, we can discuss that also. So, I don't know what.
Something other than the meeting, just the fact it's closed doors, that's all?
I, I always have to request an open meeting to have the closed-door session. So, that's why I'm requesting.
But we're having the closed-door session before or after?
That's the board's prerogative.
Sometime on Friday.
No, it's, no, the 7th is our meeting.
Yeah, we have, we have a meeting scheduled on the 7th.
The 7th. So, the question is, do you want to have it at the beginning, before the meeting, like we've done before, like at 2 o'clock?
The 6th is a Wednesday.
Correct.
Okay, 7th is Thursday. Okay.
So, the question is, do you want to have it before the regular meeting at 2 o'clock?
I, fine with that.
I don't care before or after.
Or after.
Trouble with afterward.
It might be better for the public.
I don't care. If we get it done at 2 o'clock, or we do it at 2 o'clock, then we're done with it. And then, the, the public meeting doesn't have to, you know, meet any certainties.
I'm, I'm fine.
So, just for 2, 2, 2.
Yeah, 2 o'clock, anytime.
2 o'clock.
On the 7th?
On the 7th, yes.
Until you're drafting that.
Yes, and I'll prepare the notice as well as everything.
Well, we have a board, we, we have a Board of Supervisors workshop scheduled for 2. So, at the end.
That same day?
Well, I mean, if you don't have anything that you guys want to put on the workshop, we can put that in lieu of.
We can do that.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Hey, we're working.
Or you could, depending upon how long the session lasted, you could still do the workshop if you have half an hour between that.
I, as of right now, as of right now, we don't have anything scheduled for the workshop since we've gotten through a budget. But if there's something that the board would like us to put, we can. Otherwise, we can do it in lieu of.
Well, let's just earmark the hour as, well, as closed door.
Okay.
With the, uh, with the workshop a possibility. Nothing comes up, we won't need it. Um, but we have two to three. Hopefully, the closing session only takes 30 minutes.
Okay.
But.
Thank you.
Might take five.
Maybe.
The opinion and title for the utility, that's already taken care of hotwire. We filed the lawsuit in county court, and we're asking the hotwires if they're going to accept service or not. And we've not, do not yet have an answer on that. On the Pelican Reserve infrastructure easement ownership identification, again, as to the VIA, that's completed. The easement document is satisfactory to all sides. It's been sent by their, uh, VIA's attorney to their association for signings. Hopefully, we'll get it back shortly, wrap up the VIA landscaping buffers. That was a, a good exercise with Passarella to help sort of narrow down the scope of what we need for other areas. And working with, uh, Mr. Keppert and Chelsea and Laura, uh, trying to pin down other areas in Pelican Reserve that the district may be maintaining landscaping that is on your golf course property or PPCA property and then how to address that. So, that's a work in progress.
We have met with golf. I'm not sure whose ball the court is in. Are we sending something to them?
Tony's, yeah. Waiting on Tony's review of the golf course easement document.
It's a pretty simple one, but golf.
I think I just got that yesterday, I think, or maybe before, yesterday.
Sure. Yeah.
I think it was yesterday.
It's a couple weeks ago, but that's okay. I re, I, I resented yesterday.
Okay.
So, you will pursue.
Looking at that, reviewing that.
Illegal ease to give it to golf, so they can take it to their R, like we did with the V.
He's, he's, he's going to review, send it back to me, and I'll send it to Desi.
The final remaining step is with PPCA, through those areas, to negotiate with them to see if they agree with where we want to go. And we're going on with that now.
Yep.
Thank you.
And again, meeting with, uh, and working with Will Cronin and the folks at Passarella, it's been a good exercise. The, uh, new admin building, uh, provided my opinion of title yesterday, so the DO could be applied for the final submittal, hopefully.
I like the way you're, I love your optimism.
Final, uh, application to be submitted, yes.
Yeah.
In addressing all of their issues, the, uh, let me go back to the next page regarding the SRF construction loan. Laura sent off my comments to DEP at, in regards to making adjustments. And I think the DEP was fine with most of them, except for one that we still need to work with.
Correct.
On the amendments to, with regards to, uh, May versus Shell.
Yes.
Is this on that 89, uh, deal?
No, this is on the construction loan for the irrigation.
It does, yes.
It ties into it, but this is.
It ties into it, yes.
But this is DEP for the, uh, for the five-year. That could be taken out by some 20-year financing afterwards. But there's language in there with regards to what particular ratio needs to be maintained. And so, we're kind of May versus Shell or parity debt, senior debt. So, that, that's, we're working on that with Laura is, with FDEP. Uh, let's see, Daniels Parkway Apartments Submittal, that's been completed. And as a follow-up to what Stephen said, I had another phone call today with Gregor Bance, he's the attorney for Daniels Parkway Apartments, wanting clarification as to the basis for the board's determination to not allow irrigation wells. I pointed out the utility rule language. I also pointed out the language in the SRF loan agreements for our utility system that talks about, uh, mandatory connections and no free service. So, I think he understood that. Maybe they don't like that, but I explained that. My opinion to the board is they need to be careful about that, and that's part of the board's rationale. As well as, that even though it may cost them $400,000 or $500,000, they have, they're reasonably accessible to the district's irrigation system. It's just a matter of working out the engineering and the costs associated with that. Uh, on the cross-connection, uh, prevention policy, Leslie and Laura, I think Chelsea are working on tweaking the language that I provided to them from, uh, other organizations and so that we can do a rule amendment this coming year on the cross-connection policy, uh, in the rule as well as a separate policy. FGUE interca, FGUA intercat, I think you got another version yesterday, that the legislative, that's revised from the prior version from, I think, last week. And then we have a Zoom call coming up shortly on that. The landscaping in Stony Brook, uh, addressed that already. Working, though, with Chelsea, uh, and we've been working with the association, I'll call it, on the west side of Gateway, past the Stony Brook Gate, Gateway Village, a big vegetated preserve area about potentially having the HOA quit claiming that to the district.
The HOA did, um, pay Grady Minor to do it, provide a sketch and legal description, which they received today. Um, so, we're waiting on direction from the HOA, putting it to a quitclaim deed form. And I think, Tony, you mentioned.
This is to the west of the apartments or the condos?
Yeah. No, that's south of the condos, west of Gateway Boulevard.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I believe it's the HO, I don't want to speak on behalf of the HOA, but, um, I do, I believe Mr. McCollough had mentioned in an email that they, it is their intent to, uh, convey that to the district, quitclaim that to the district, and hence the sketch and legal from Grady Minor. Tony, I think you were going to email them back a couple additional items that they would need for your review.
Yeah, just real quick, I'll send them back a form of quitclaim deed owner's affidavit and ask them for title or property information.
How many acres?
It's good size. And there's a, I think there's a conservation area in the middle of it.
Is that in the city or in the county?
County.
It's in the county?
Yeah.
And that, the preservation area will not be invade, just the tract be 14, I believe.
The preservation area is in the middle of it.
Okay. I, I have, I have. I know the sketch and legal came through, which will, will get.
Which is the whole tract be, then there's a separate.
Yeah, we'll get that from them.
I have a question. I would do, are we required to do, to, are we requiring them to bring the property into compliance, or there is nonsense? The preservation area is just in the center of it?
No, they, they would be required to make it and get it into compliance regarding invasives and things like that. So, and, and we had a meeting with, um, Joe and Gary and Annette and explained that.
What's a zone?
I have no idea.
Gateway PD, probably. I, but as far as which district, I don't know. I'd have to check the map.
Guys, wondering if it's a single family or multifamily, commercial, what?
It's, it's designated.
I think it's a green area.
Nothing else? I mean, must the board have other questions to ask?
Yeah, I think one thing you and I talked earlier today that you'd offered to, uh, get, get to the board members, uh, recall at the next meeting, we're going to have Louis Di Agostino here.
Yes.
And we need to get questions answered or questions prepared so that we don't slip them in on it. Uh, and we want to make sure that they're accurate. Tony has volunteered to take his, uh, files and send the pertinent files, but the files would probably be that call, uh, on everything that occurred on the road turnover. But the pertinent documents, they're really from what, about April 13 to April?
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of history. It started in '08 and '09, then it picked back up again in '12, '13, then again in '14, and '16, '17, and '19. So, what I'll do is, uh.
Well, hold on.
He's going to purge it.
Before we go and do that, we have well over expended.
Doubled.
Doubled the funds for Mr. Di Agostino, and I asked him to cease all work until he comes and presents to the board.
This doesn't have anything to do with him.
No, what I, what I.
It's for us to prepare the questions individually for him.
Yeah, what I've, what I've indicated, because I think.
No, we're not going to dump anymore on him.
It'd be helpful for the board to have some of this information as how they frame the questions.
Frame the questions.
It's not, it's not to provide all the answers, just that some of the background. And I'm going to caveat, as I mentioned to Mr. Tinkle, caveat it said, these are some of the documents. There might be other documents that support these or contradict these.
I just think everybody, before they ask a question.
It's over the span of 10 years. 11 years. It started in '08, and there's question and answers, white papers, uh, committee meetings, committee meetings, board meetings, a ton of emails with documents. So, I just was going to pick a few.
And when you, when you started going through.
There might be a lot of few, but again, it would be a caveat saying, this is just sort of a broad brush.
Right. To, 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 when I started going through, when he had called, started going through my files, there is a plethora of stuff that is not on point on the issue here, which is the utility and the utility damage costs. There's stuff on sidewalks and trees and landscaping and the street signs and streetlights and all that. That didn't have anything to do with the point, the subject. So, he's going to try to narrow it down to those things that led right to what I guess we called, and Louis pointed out, is paragraph 16, which was the one that talked about the utilities being totally replaced and being encapsulated and all that, that which drove this cost in, into oblivion.
Okay, so you're going to provide a share file to the board and to staff of those documents prior to Mr. Di Agostino coming?
Earlier, so that we can get our ones to you.
Oh, yeah, as soon as I can, I've already started gathering, I started doing that, because I, again, the history goes back. I know the focus is 13 forward, but there was a lot leading up to it, '08, '09. And I will do that and with a caveat, as I mentioned.
All right, please.
This is for the September 7th?
Yes.
Yeah. So, by the end of this month, we should all have had, looked at that, formulated our questions, got them to Chelsea, consolidate them, and then get them to Louis.
And Mr. Senior did provide his questions that he read in the record when he came to present. So, uh, Louis does have those questions, but if you have any additional questions, again, I'd like to get this to, to him before the meeting so he can prep an answer.
Yeah, and again, that's part of what, what I was thinking, to assist the board in preparing the questions. That's what this is for, so they can see some of the background history. Uh, Mr. Tinkle was on the advisory committee, the road turnover committee. Mr. Seashell was also, and so, that's why I think, as you say, one box in your garage, I have more than one.
I had enough.
All right.
That it?
Yes, sir.
Anything, any other questions, uh, Tony? Uh, thanks, Tony. Uh, future board business agenda?
Agenda management.